Good evening, everybody. Tonight, these candidates will be vying for your first preference vote on why they should be the next Welcome Bay Award councillor. But with every election, there's one thing stepping in their way, and that's your vote. And good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's It's in the Ballot show here from the Welcome Bay Hall. And I hope everyone's having their good parts tonight. So we'll get there. And just as those who have probably a little bit noticed, I remember when I was a much younger kid, spending a lot of time in Welcome Bay at my dad's place when he was living up in Shady Lane. Oh, God, that's about 20 years ago now, suddenly thinking about it. But I've been told the hot pools are still virtually the same. And I've been told, I think the cost is a bit more to go here now than they do. I remember they've been in like gold coin territory when I was a kid. So before we get to the introductions, let's get our candidates peeling themselves off one by one. Let's kick off with the closest to me. I would like to see who you are first. Name?
My name's Donna Hannah, and I'm standing for the Welcome Bay Ward.
I'm Robert Ko, and I'm standing for Welcome Bay as well.
Kia ora, I'm Otapu Baker, and I'm also standing for the Welcome Bay Ward.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cameron Templar, and I am also standing for the Welcome Bay Ward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aurel Graguta. I'm standing for Welcome Bay Ward and for Mayor of Taronga.
And thank you for that. So what would you say before we get to opening statements is the best thing about Welcome Bay? Oh, all of yous.
The fish and chips.
Yeah, I can certainly second that.
For me, it's the people by far. No one does community better than this ward.
Here, here. Also, the great view of our moa on the way to work in the morning always brightens my morning.
Okay, so let's kick off with opening statements. Now, I want to get this right. Houtapu?
Houtapu, but very good.
Houtapu, okay. You get to go first.
Joyce. Oh, Kia ora, good Kia ora, everybody. Good evening. My name is Houtapu Baker, and as I mentioned earlier, I'm standing for the Welcome Bay Ward for reasons why. I have two little girls and a boy on the ray. They were born and raised in our community, and they go to Kohanga and Mungatapu. They are the reason I'm running. It's our kids. They are the reason I'm running. Once upon a time, I was one of the Houtatu kids of our community. On a Wednesday and Friday night, was delivering pamphlets up and down the streets of Mungatapu and Hiredini, and every other night was kicking a rugby ball around the streets, parks and reserves of our ward. If in the early 2000s, your ball, your car was kicked or hit by a stray rugby ball, it was probably me or my little brother. To cut a long story short, and because we've got a bit of an intimate setting tonight, I'm going to mix things up a bit, a little bit. You're going to hear about who I am and what I stand for as the night goes on. But I want you to know more than anything that I'm about relationships, because that's about, that's everything, building authentic relationships with people and community so we can leverage those abilities and resources to achieve collective good. The only way to do that is to actually get to know the person sitting next to you. So with the 30 seconds I imagine I've got left, I'm going to get us all to stand up and go and introduce ourselves to someone we've never met before. Your name, where you're from, and the reason that you're here. Ready, steady, go.
I imagine that's my time, but thank you all for participating. And I hope that that gives you a little bit of an insight as to who I am and what I stand for, because I genuinely believe that collectively, with your strengths and my strengths, we can achieve great outcomes for our ward and city. Kia ora. Okay, I'm going to have a lot of fun here. You're a Leo?
Okay, yeah. My name is Aurel.
Leo.
Yeah, not many people can say it, and I don't worry too much about it. I lived in Taronga for over 20 years, and I saw this city developing, but also I've been witnessing the waste that our council has been, just the wasteful resources that we see everywhere around the city. So my campaign is very simple. I'm standing to try to eliminate the wasteful spendings in our council. So this is my main reason why I'm running. So thank you.
Okay, next up, Ethan.
Kia ora, everybody. My name's Ethan. As you can see, I'm probably one of the younger candidates here. I've lived in Mungatapu for 16, nearly 17 years, and just wanted to give back to the community that's helped raise me. So yeah, I'm young, so I want to bring in a fresh youth perspective and really push hard for the issues that face all of you, not just in Mungatapu, not just in Hiredini, but across the whole ward together. So thank you all for coming.
Robert. Good evening, everyone. My name's Robert Ko, obviously. I grew up in Mungatapu until I was about 16 years old. I've lived in Taronga for a bit after that, and then went to the Waikato and also the Far North. But I came back here because it's always been home. And like I said, I love the view of the mountains when I'm driving to work. I think now with this particular juncture in Taronga's history, we need a strong advocate for this suburb, because nobody's really had an advocate anywhere for the past four years. So you need somebody strong who can, I don't know, interpret information and make wise decisions. Now, I've got this little prop here. I was going to bring the long-term plan, but that thing beside me, I don't think that's a wise decision. It's a waste of money, because if it's raining, your bike's going to be wet anyway, isn't it? And also, that thing out there, well, wouldn't the money be better spent somewhere else, such as fixing Tarot Road?
I assume you're talking about that roundabout, that getting built?
Yes, that roundabout.
Donna?
Good evening, Kia ora. My name's Donna Hannah, and I'm from Taronga. Taronga is my home. Taronga is my place. Whatever you name, you call it, Taronga. I've heard it all, Taronga. I've heard it called, all sorts of things. Welcome Bay has always been a place to come to with the Kaori Falls and just the great parks and the wetlands that you've got around here. It's just a great space. The problem is, it kind of feels like the poor child in the city. There's so much development everywhere else but here. Welcome Bay Shops is Welcome Bay Shops. Mungatapu Shops is the same. The roads are the same. There's very little development. You guys have been paying rates for I don't know how long, however long you've been here, what have you got for it? And I'm here for ratepayers, for accountability and viability. There's no point making promises if you can't afford to pay for it. That's why I'm standing, and I hope I get a good response from you guys. Thank you.
And I can certainly say one thing that's changed is they added an A next to State Highway 29. Okay, and Cameron?
Ooh, right. I'm glad I didn't have to follow up Houtapu over here. Hi, everyone. My name's Cameron Templar. I'm an entrepreneur, a local business owner and a community advocate based here in Taronga. I'm standing for the Welcome Bay Ward as it's the place I grew up in and spent 20 years of my life. I'm currently the owner-operator of Taronga Indoor Sports and the CEO of Tech Startup Squad Manager, which is also based here in Taronga. My top priorities on the council are to deliver better transport networks, revive our CPD, unlock our economic potential and ensure Welcome Bay Ward gets that much-needed supermarket. My vision for Welcome Bay Ward and Taronga City is a smart, vibrant, connected community that is a great place to live, work and play. Thank you.
Okay, and with the game of musical chairs with the crew tonight, I see you've been given the backdoor keys this time, Nick.
Yes, I have. Had no problem giving you back the front door, or the, you know, car key.
I don't know, the car keys?
The car keys, you know. I enjoy driving, but you know, being my second time, I was too worried about crashing.
I understand that feeling very, very well. But hey, you know, as I say, we're driving, learning, was it, practice makes perfect?
Yep, yes, it does.
And at least you didn't have a creepy supervisor standing over your shoulder.
No, I didn't. No, I didn't.
Okay, so we're up for our first section here with the question boxes here. So each candidate gets to pick a box number, and then they've got to answer the question in it. Each candidate gets given two button cards and one defer card. If they, if another candidate gets a question they want and they want to stick in their answer, they use their button cards. And if they get a question they really don't want to answer, they can use their defer card and give it to another candidate. Now, I'd love to sit and say defer it to a candidate who didn't come here tonight, but that's a bit impossible on tonight's show when all six candidates turn up. And I'm proud, you know, this is a great achievement. So all the boxes are sealed there, Nick? Oh, which pesky number is that? Nine. Okay, so Ethan, you get to pick the first box number. What would you like?
I'll go number nine then.
Didn't get to resell it that long.
All right. We have T for Taronga. If you are elected as a councillor, will you decelerate council spending on unwanted grand projects and consolidate the vital necessary infrastructure needs such as roading?
Absolutely. All my campaign, I've really pushed hard for roading. It's one of my main focuses, especially fixing the Tarot Road bottleneck that we face every day when we try and go into the city. I will really look at reining in council spending on some grandiose projects that they've brought in and, yeah, help bring down your rates again and, yeah, bring the city back to how it was.
And we have a button from Donna.
Hi. One of the things that I'm very passionate about is overspending, and I'm not particularly happy with the way that things are currently being sitting. So I want to make sure that we're fiscally sound and that we actually are viable. So absolutely, I don't want to spend large anywhere else but in our infrastructure, because that's where it's needed. I think for too long, we've left it to just go by the wayside, and I think we're now in a position where we need to spend some considerable money on our roading. Sorry, I'm anti-stage two, just so that you know. I don't believe we should be spending $20 million on another road that works perfectly fine as it is. So there's lots of things we could do with that money instead. Thank you.
Okay. Aurel, you're there.
Got that one wrong.
All good.
I've written phonetically how to say it.
Those books, one, number one. Did I say any?
Alpha Bravo. How will you support youth leadership and civil engagement programs?
Oh, let me find my answer. Okay, this is one of the topics that often comes up, and we hear a lot of talk, but not any practical solutions. The very minimum that the council can do in supporting these groups would be to offer them our existing facilities, so at least they have a place where to come together and connect to each other. The city halls that we have already that are paid by the ratepayers for maintenance and it's just all paid for already, these communities, they could go and use these facilities without having to pay again for them. There are people that, volunteers, that would like to engage with young people, but they cannot by themselves to pay for these facilities, same as the young people who are paid that little fees. So this is one way that we could help by facilitating what we have already.
You want to use a button?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kia ora. It's actually quite topical considering the amazing, beautiful youth in the room here tonight. But in all seriousness, we need, I need, I would push to advocate at a national level to reduce the voting age back to 16. Unfortunately, it got passed. But for me personally, we need to be engaging our young people a lot younger. And if we looked at reducing the voting age to 16, it would mean that conversations are happening in schools and in the home, which is incredibly important for civil engagement. That's a lofty aspiration. It's a few years away from ever being a reality. But of the immediate, and something that I think will resonate with all of us in the room, is actually making democracy in our civil engagement here. So going out into our communities and having these big council meetings and our community halls where you guys can sit live, debate and discuss, rather than trying to get into an inaccessible city to engage in council meetings. We need to take it to the people is one thing that I would do in the immediate to ensure that not even just young people, but all people have equitable access to their voice at the table and can engage authentically with civic duties, responsibilities and opportunities. Kia ora.
And just want to put a point of clarification on there to reduce the age to 16, because we actually haven't had it ever yet at 16 in New Zealand. But I think the general gist of what you're trying to say is shift it to 16 to match that Supreme Court ruling.
That's right. And because we're going to be, I'll be your councillor for four years, we have a good amount of time to make that a reality.
Yeah. Okay, Cameron, what box number?
Number six, please.
B for Victor. Auckland Council has recently shifted to taking away recycling bins of people who mix general waste with their recycling. Should Taronga consider doing the same thing?
Yeah, of course, I would consider it. It's pretty much common sense, although in Taronga, we have one of the best waste management and recycling units in all of the country. So I don't really think it's an issue here. It's probably an issue with how intelligent the people of Auckland are. So, hey.
More than the news.
But in short, if you don't discard your recycling correctly, you don't deserve to get your bins removed. But of course, if we were to do that, people are just going to put their recycling in the rubbish bins, and it's going to cause the same problem. Thank you.
Donna, what box number?
Oh, 16. 16.
So would you support the voting age going to 16?
No. Yes. Sorry, their frontal lobe is not developed. They may, yeah.
Okay, well, since she's saying that, I feel like I have a right to justify the response, since there wasn't actually one related. Hey, I get it. I get, I get that point genuinely, I do. But the reality is, at the age of 16, many of our kids work. That means that they're paying taxes. Many of our kids also, because whanau need it, actually have to pay in some way, shape or form for board, which contributes, then goes into your rates. So by that extension alone, as a ratepayer, they have a right to have their voice heard. And why can't it be heard on equal terms with the rest of us? Food for thought, yitewa whanau, food for thought.
Okay, so Nick, what question?
E for Alpha. What political party are you linked to?
I am actually not linked to any political party. From my point of view, I stand for what I stand, and I feel that sometimes political parties tend to want to group in a mess and come up with, they make decisions, decide to say X, and suddenly it gets changed because other people in their party says, you need to change. Sorry, that's not me. I would stand up right now and say, I'm for the ratepayers, I'm for accountability, and I'm for viability. And if any of those are out of whack, I don't care who says what, they're out of whack. We need to make it right.
It sounds very much similar to the late Penny Bright, because that was very much what she stood for. Okay, Robert, what box number?
Number two, please.
J for Jericho. Let's go with that. Are you prepared to support unpopular but necessary levels of rates increases in order to ensure the financial viability of the council instead of voting for lower rates increases in the interest of your own reelection prospects at the expense of future councils being able to fund infrastructure maintenance and upgrades?
I would, but first I'd have to be convinced that they are actually necessary. I mean, there are certain things that have already been committed to, which in my opinion, probably not entirely necessary, could be done a bit cheaper. The Civic Precinct is a perfect example, also the $90 million for a stadium. Yeah, and also my favorite little bit of the long-term plan, the secret event that's happening in 2028, that council have committed $980,000 to. I mean, it's spread over two financial years, but I think the ratepayers have the right to know what their money is being spent on, and they're currently being denied that. So, yeah, I would, yeah, if I thought it was necessary. But of course, I'd have to go to the community to get a mandate on that, because there's a lot of people who are struggling as it is, rates are high enough, and they should be kept as low as possible.
Okay, we've got one or two buttons?
Two, I think. Yes, yes, and yes, I would support this. The underinvestment in our city has been the biggest failure by previous councils, and it isn't hard to see why. This doesn't mean I support increasing rates significantly. I just do not support cutting costs to allow for lower rates just to get elected. I have a proven plan to grow our local economy through innovation and startups. It will cost our city effectively nothing and return dividends for a lifetime. It's going to create thousands of jobs, attract talent and investors from all around the world, and it's going to further grow our local economy and community. Thank you.
Why do we start with assumptions that it is necessary to increase the rates? If we stop the wasteful and unnecessary spending, that it will not be necessary to increase the rates. Let's start eliminating the waste, and then we can, we can talk about the rates increases. When people see how much of the public money is wasted on bureaucracy and red tape and consultancy and report writing, people are not willing to accept rates increases. So I don't support it.
So we've gone through six questions. Let's get through another six more. Cameron, what box number?
I'll take number 25. Thank you.
Oh, yes. What was it? Isn't that the age that your insurance car excess drops simply by age?
M for Mike. What qualifications do you hold that would qualify you for councillor? And what skills have you got that ensure you will perform well as a councillor?
Glad I got this question. I was actually going to button on it. I hold extensive experience as a tech founder and local business owner, including founding multiple startups and leading a successful indoor sports centre. The background has honed my skills in strategic planning, financial management and community engagement. I have a strong track record of fostering collaboration, driving innovation and delivering results. My most significant experience governing was when I was on the Board of Directors, when I was the Board of Directors Chair and Chief Executive at my previous startup. The company raised 1.5 million in pre-seed funding, achieved 800,000 ARR, operated in five countries and had 14 full-time employees. That company was later acquired by an enterprise in early 2023. I'm also on multiple boards for indoor sports such as Bay of Plenty Indoor Sports Trust, Mount Marcos Club. Thank you.
Hold on. Oh, okay, no, my connection has frozen.
Do I have to say it again?
No, no, no. I know Donna, so we've got two buttons. Who's going first?
All right. So what makes me qualified? I became an adult, number one. And I think running a household, you pretty much know how to manage that. You know how to work with inside your budget. You know when you're in proverbial, when things don't match, and you know when you've got creditors on your door. From that experience, I've also raised five adult children. I have 17 grandchildren, and I like to hang out with them. I also believe that they are part of the community, and you need to raise good adults, good young people into good adults. It's the only way you're going to build communities. I also had been IT manager for the Girls College, did that for 10 years, worked in the MOE. They are very structured about what happens to taxpayers' monies. I worked for Western Bay District Council, working in the community space, and again, was accountable to ratepayers. I now work in a not-for-profit organisation in Kati Kati as the operations manager, and I'm now accountable to funders. I am accountable at every step of the way. I have to be, and that's why I stand by being accountable. I want to know what your money goes for. Thank you.
And continuing on with buttons? Your buttons? Yeah.
Kia ora.
Have you used two already?
Yep, this is my second one. This was actually one of the ones.
No, no, oh, no, sorry.
That doesn't count into my time, eh?
Sorry, no, no, I'm seeing, seeing stuff here, but cameras don't see it. No, all good.
All good. Kia ora tāti. I did my undergraduate in political science, and then I also pursued my master's degree in Indigenous studies with a huge political science focus, because it's a passion. I started my professional career in corporate banking, actually, where I learnt how money works and how to manage significant amounts of debt. I then moved into the health and social service sector, working with individuals and families on the ground during hard times and supported them from the positive, from the negative right through to positive. I moved into the machine of Taronga City Council, working in community engagement, again, accountable to ratepayers and achieving really good community outcomes. In that space, I understood quite clearly the machine of council and how it works and how to best unlock the potential of a council to work for its ratepayers and community. I now sit in a multimillion-dollar National Science Challenge on the Directorate of the Resilience to Nature's Challenge National Science Challenge, responding to natural hazards and disasters. There I'm accountable and responsible for scientists, researchers, students, engineers, technicians. And in that space, I work at the interface between relationships with communities and all that cool work that gets done at the science centre, make sure that our people who need that work, the money gets there. So I've had a good time. Really feels like the buzzer doesn't work, because we all seem to be going over time anyways. But I hope that gives you a bit of an insight into who I am and the credentials that I carry to carry an agency of this magnitude. Kia ora.
I don't quite have a long resume like that, but I'll let people to decide whether I qualify to be in a council. So I just want to say, I've been in New Zealand for, or I came to New Zealand when I was 23, and at the age of 26, I started the And at the age of 26, I started, I built my first home and I started my first business. By the age of 37, I had seven properties, farms and commercial buildings and houses. And my kids go to private school, ACG, that probably many of you may know. It's not a cheap school to send your kids to. I take my family on overseas holidays every year. So, you know, people say that I did well for myself and for my family. How did I do it? Very simple. Work hard and be very careful with my spendings. And this is what I want to bring to this council, to bring the spendings under control. If we can bring that under control, we can achieve all those dreams and all those wishes that we have. Without that, I think.
And don't sit down, you get the next box number.
Am I getting it? Whatever the, yeah, the one closest to you.
U for Unicorn. Thanks.
The last thing we're bringing in here is Unicorn.
Do you support the planned 164% increase in rates over the next 10 years?
Not sure where my answer on this paper is, but I'll just say that, no, I don't support the increase. The reason is, I want to first bring the wasteful spending under control. Then we could talk about the rates increase. And more than that, do we, the council and the bureaucrats, did they ever stay within what they promised, the prices? They promised us 168%. Be sure that it's going to be way more than that in 10 years. So I absolutely don't support that increase. So thank you.
Sam, can I call a point of order?
Quickly, go ahead.
Thanks. First of all, just for everyone here and watching at home, it's incorrect to state that it's a 140% rate increase. It is a 64% rate increase, which is 164% of what you are currently paying. Just so that's clear. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, you explained it better than I would have. Okay, Robert, what box number?
Box three, please.
Z for Zebra. What will you do to help tackle substance abuse and support those affected in our community?
This is a bit, I suppose, difficult. It's not really a council matter as far as funding goes. That's a central government issue. All I could say is that there are some great private agencies around Tooranga doing good work with substance abuse. Hanma Clinic springs to mind. I think really, the only way that council would be able to help them is perhaps giving them a bit of a break on their rates bill, because I'm pretty sure they'll be paying commercial rates, which is a differential, which means that it's more than residential for the same thing. And, yeah, maybe some of the people around town, like parking wardens or whatever, who might see some of the homeless who do suffer from substance abuse issues, could perhaps point them in the right direction.
Ethan, what box number?
I'll go box number 21, please.
Yes, the voting age when my grandmother started voting in 1949.
P for Panama. What is your position on fluoridating Taronga's water supply?
Thank you. Well, I believe that fluoridation is quite a controversial subject, but nonetheless, I do support the fluoridation of the water in the support of the public health. But I do believe there are further issues in our city that we need to tackle first before we look at tackling fluoridation.
Just want to ask a question on there. Who should pay for the fluoridisation? The Ministry of Health or the rate payers? Considering it's at the moment the Ministry of Health directive.
Then it should be the Ministry of Health paying for it.
Oh, I like that answer. Now we've got a button from Robert.
Okay, this is a pressing issue. I beg to differ, Ethan, because it is going to begin in September of this year. I did an official information at request of the council to find out exactly what it is that is being put in the water. It's a substance called hydrofluorescic acid, and it is highly toxic. People, when they put it in the water, they need to wear hazmat suits. Now, I'm not going to get into the science of whether it's good or bad. All I'm going to get into is risks, okay? I have worked in petrochemical plants, and we're not allowed to carry cigarette lighters or matches in our pockets. And the reason is, is because the chances of something happening are negligible, but if it did, the results would be catastrophic. And an overdose of hydrofluorescic acid would be exactly that. And anyone who thinks it can't happen, it actually happened in 2022 in Wellington, in one of the reservoirs. They had to dump a whole reservoir full of water because the dosing machine malfunctioned. Okay, so, you know, maybe it's good for teeth, maybe it's bad.
Was this the, when it went over its safe limits?
It went well over, and they had to dump the whole.
I don't know how I didn't know that. I live in Wellington.
It's on stuff.
Yeah, I'm going to have to sit there and look it up.
They've been very quiet about it, because the other thing too is that they also revealed that the dosing equipment had been malfunctioning for four years.
Oh, that I do remember. And it was because they were monitoring maximum levels, but not minimum levels.
Anyway, and a man also died from fluoride poisoning in Alaska in the late 90s due to malfunctioning dosing equipment, and a whole village got sick, and several were hospitalized. So, yeah, sorry, I'm out of time.
Sorry. Interesting. Donna?
Hopefully something less. 22?
Yeah, hopefully something less controversial.
C for Charlie. In recent years, violence directed towards Aotearoa and, in this case, Tooranga's LGBTQAI community has increased, most notably with the destruction of our community's Rainbow Youth Facility in an attack. How would you create a Taronga that actively promotes an appreciation of our diverse communities?
To be honest, I think it needs to happen. You know, I think we cannot sit in judgment of other people. Who made us righteous? Who made us decide who is the right person or the wrong person? Or the right person to fall in love, or the wrong group to get together? Who made that decision? Because I'm pretty sure I didn't, and I'm pretty sure everybody here didn't. So why can't we live in a diverse community? Why does it have to be one thing or another? So from my point of view, I'm very strong about this. I work in Kataki Kati right now, and I'm very passionate about making sure that Rainbow Youth have a voice. And you know what? They're just as much a right to have a voice and a say about what goes on in their city and their community. They're the same as everybody else. Young mums, elderly people, they are all different groups, and they're just another group that has a right to be. And I don't think anybody here has a right to sit in judgment. So from my point of view, absolutely I'd be promoting this. Absolutely for this.
Hotapu?
Yay, five. 10, 15.
Oh, the age I got my driver's licence at. How many people here got their driver's licence at 15?
How many got it on their first go? Okay, it was just me then, okay.
And that's both Class One and Class Two in a manual, and 100% indicating off at the roundabouts correctly, in the Class Two.
Bring back the manual, man, I tell you.
There's a man out there that's menu.
All right, Q for Quilt. Given the overwhelming empirical evidence showing that sprawl costs the public purse rate payers way more than intensive urban development, for example, the OECD shows it triples the cost of public services, will you agree to contain the city boundaries as they are to encourage the city to go up instead of out?
Kiwada, yes, I was hoping I'd get one of these questions. Yes, I do. I believe in intensification over sprawl. But more importantly, I actually believe that we need to invest in our communities, like our Welcome Bay Ward, and create more amenities. We need more education facilities for our kids. If we take Toyo Huma, which is technically just outside of our ward, but really should be included in our ward, there's massive opportunity there for an extra high school, for healthcare services, for health and social service providers, for a business hub to extend on the existing one there to actually reduce congestion and the reason for the many of us to actually traverse into the city. So we can build the city up, but let's also invest in our community here and create more opportunities for us to connect face-to-face through mechanisms like that. Kiwada.
While you're talking on topic of high school, while you still talk top of high school, where is Nearest High School from here? Is it still Cameron Road?
So, yes.
Yep. Oh, gosh. You think some things may have changed, they haven't.
Well, it actually depends, I suppose. We've got a full immersion Maori school out the back, which I technically think might be like a K closer than Tooranga Boys, but that goes from Ko Hangarau right through to college.
That was there when my dad was living here as a kid. So it's been there for a very, very long time.
Good community, I think.
Well, would you like to stand back up again and choose another box number?
Me again?
Yeah.
16?
You know, this random order number sheet, since you froze out some curveballs.
No 16? I'm pretty sure I said 17.
What's important about 17 as an age?
I don't know.
I think you can join the army. Oh, you never know, these bootcabs coming up.
I think you can get a tattoo with parental permission at 17. Could be wrong.
Stacey has just told me at 16.
Thanks, Stacey.
Cheers, Stacey.
Thanks, Stacey. All right, L for Lima. Shortly, Taronga city councillors will be asked to approve a proposal for the installation of Rainbow Street Art in the CBD. The aim of the project is to celebrate our Rainbow community, acknowledge our wider diversity, and improve the vibrancy of our CBD. Would you vote in favour of the proposal? And if not, why not?
I 100% would, and here's my reasons. If a rainbow in the sky doesn't offend you, then a rainbow on the ground, I don't think should either. A rainbow isn't also associated to the LGBTQI+ community. A rainbow in my culture is a good omen, and I know in many religious fronts as well, a rainbow is a good omen as well. So when I look at a rainbow, I don't exclusively see the LGBTQI community. I see a sign of a good omen, as I'm sure many others do. So if we have that on the ground, I'm sure if you've got your religious views or your cultural views, and there's a connection to the rainbow there, you're going to see the same thing. Tooranga literally means, for those of you that may not know, safe anchorage. And that inspires my vision for all people, regardless of who you are or where you come from, to be able to anchor safely in our city and feel a sense of purpose and belonging. So if a rainbow pedestrian crossing is going to provide a sense of connection and belonging for you, then I'm all for that. And the reality is, my kids love rainbows. And if they see a rainbow-coloured crossing on the ground, they're going to go all wise. They're going to be walking up and down that all day, causing huge congestion issues, but they're going to love the experience nonetheless. So in short, and to try and get as close to a minute without getting the buzzer, because that's the goal for tonight, yes, I support that.
When you come to Wellington, they can do it on Dixon Street and hold out the traffic, and then they can go to Newtown School that magically had their cyclist fictional pedestrian crossing that got changed to a rainbow after the rainbow crossings got painted in white. I thought that was quite weird. But if you're someone who don't know what the green lines mean on the phone, you wouldn't know that it's a cycle track, so you wouldn't know the rainbow was a pedestrian crossing.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to invest time painting whites on our roads, go and paint some more car parks in the CBD and do some white lines. Let's be a bit more constructive with our white paint, shall we?
And get some yellow ones out for the disabled and blue.
Kiwada, Kiwada, I agree.
Robert, what box number?
I hit a button.
Oh, you hit a button? Sorry.
Yeah, I just, I would support a rainbow crossing, but on the proviso that rate payers didn't pay for the whole thing. Now, the reason is that Waikatoa have got very specific rules about what a pedestrian crossing should be. And there's a reason for that. It's got to be black and white, and it's got to have a little striped pole on either side with a light over the top, so you can see at night. And the reason is, is that's recognised internationally as a pedestrian crossing. Okay, now, rainbow crossing falls under the category of what's called a courtesy crossing, and Waikatoa also have some very specific rules about that. First is it has to be in a 30-k per hour zone, which isn't a problem downtown. But the second is, is that it must have traffic lights. Okay, so something that'll cost under 10 grand to do, which is a nice to have, will suddenly becomes a six-figure sum because you need traffic lights. And so on those grounds, I would be hesitant to support it if the rate payer was paying. And the other reason being is that there are certain people in society who would see it as that community giving the finger to them as rate payers, and it could sort of go against the very objective that it's supposed to achieve. That's my opinion.
That's all right. Okay, and now, no more, oh, we've got another button? Good.
Yeah, I'm saying as Hotapu and Rob here, yeah, I'm a full supporter of the rainbow crossing. I think it's such an awesome idea to help get that inclusion. In high school, I was a massive supporter of the inclusion community in our high school. I proudly wore a pride badge through my year 13 year. I was massive supporter when they put up the pride flag next to the New Zealand flag at the school. I think that was really cool, and especially in a school that does need some societal changes. But, yeah, I would 100% back a rainbow crossing in the city. And I think it would be a good idea as well to get Waikatoa, our New Zealand transport agency, involved in the paying of that as well. Thank you.
I wonder if Waikatoa normally gives the 51% subsidy that normally goes for it, or is that not, I'm not sure if that's in there. And if someone online can sit there and find out that information, but most roading projects attract a 51% funding from Waikatoa, which usually comes out of the fund that we pay our petrol and our road users and our EV road users and all sorts of taxes into that consoloway fund. So normally that pays for, helps contribute to the cost of it, considering central government collects those charges. Now, I think I was at Robert for a question.
Yep, Lucky Dip, please.
Lucky Dip?
Well, then I won't pick one that's gone.
God, isn't that what we used to buy for Lotto tickets? A Lucky Dip? Yeah. Bring back some old memories. Actually, who remembers the day before Powerball?
Y for Yellow. With crime and violence on the rise, what measures will you take to ensure the safety of students walking to and from schools and public spaces?
Once again, I don't really think this is the responsibility of local government. It's more of an operational issue for the police. All that in council, I think we could do is perhaps light public spaces a bit better, so that there's no dark ellies for, you know, rat bags to spring out of and attack people. But, yeah, so I really, that's about all I can see local government doing about that, I'm afraid.
And we've got another button?
Cool, yeah, I agree with you, Rob. I'll be blunt, it is a central government issue. Local government do not really have a say when it comes to safety. But after the thousands of doors I've knocked on, it is a topic that comes up a lot, especially here in Welcome Bay. I've spoken to Tom Rufford to see what we can do and to see what I can do to help him in his efforts, and I landed on the idea of establishing the Welcome Bay Community Watch. Similar to the Tooranga South Community Watch and Papamoa Community Watch, it'll be an organisation made up of volunteers in our community to look out for one another. It can sometimes take up to three years for a non-for-profit slash charity. So I've already started that process, and it will happen regardless if I'm elected or not. I'm going to develop an app alongside it, so residents in our area can call for help when the service is available. If elected, I'll allocate a small amount of money to this organisation, how the council already does, to the two I mentioned before. Thank you.
Okay, Ethan, what box number?
Oh, I'll go number eight.
W for Wellington. How will you ensure that the voices of young people who are often at work or school during public meetings have their voices heard in local government decisions?
Thank you. Well, as a young person, I'm obviously very well-connected on social media. So I have the great ability to be in touch with young people when they want to.
so I'm, I have the great ability to be in touch with young people when they want to bring issues forward. I do really want to push for a continued presence of the city council on social media so that young people who are working, who are at school, can be able to get in touch with the people on the council so they can have their voices heard and they can have their issues heard. Regardless of whether they can vote or not, they are still a part of this city and they still have a voice, and I really want to campaign and push hard for them, especially as a young person. Thank you.
Okay, Cameron, what box number?
Number eighteen, thank you.
And just a reminder, that's the current voting age. At the age you can buy alcohol. What else can you do at eighteen vote? Alcohol, get married without parental consent?
Firearms licence? I think that's sixteen as well.
I thought that's sixteen.
Sixteen.
All right. S for Sierra. With a CBD that needs revitalising and a housing crisis, supply and affordability wise, how are cost savings and rate changes going to contribute to this?
Thank you for the question. Being efficient with money is something I'm pretty good at. In fact, the difference between successful founders and unsuccessful founders is often their ability to manage money efficiently. By optimising council spending and eliminating inefficiencies, we can redirect funds to essential infrastructure and community projects. I am in favour for the new industrial rate, which will take some pressure off the residential ratepayer. Additionally, supporting affordable housing initiatives in the city, such as streamlined approvals and private-public partnerships, will boost housing supply, affordability and breathe new life into areas such as our CBD. Thank you.
Donna?
Twelve? What's that one at the front? Yeah, that one will do. That one will do.
H for Hotel. Do you support greater levels of intensification and the loosening of height restrictions in central areas? Like that recently seen in the amended Wellington District Plan?
That's an interesting question, and I think there's a lot of review about whether we do go up and whether we don't go up. I can see some areas, especially in central Taonga, where going up will make no difference to the buildings that are already down there. I can also see where in the mountain going up is going to cause problems. However, let's be fair, the Twin Towers have been there for a number of years. All right, they're, they're not new, but they have been there for a while. All right, and we've all adjusted to it. I don't see intensification as being a bad thing. I just think we need to guide it. We need to make sure it happens in the right places and that we actually gain from it. That it's not just not put willy-nilly, that we actually have a purpose and we have an overall design that's not going to cause problems for those people that are in those spaces. So that's where I see it fits. From my point of view, I don't think I'd like a close neighbour, but you know what? There are people that don't like backyards, that don't like to have to deal with outside fences and playgrounds. So it will work for some people. So let's just be open to that.
And just a point that is probably not in the media, but I do have knowledge on it. What's happened with Wellington District Plan? There is a group that is planning to take it to the High Court for judicial review because of what happened in Wellington was the commissioners went one way, the councillors decided they knew what was better and they got, and the Minister for Environment signed off on it and they a little bit annoyed about it. And I can tell you in the case of what happened in Newtown, the pro-housing people voted down a pro-housing initiative. Because there was bought up by Newtown Residents Association, it could deliver 2,000 new dwellings in the third of the plans of the zone places, which was three times what the MPS required, which was 700 additional dwellings. And the pro-housing councillors voted it down. Which is quite interesting, that one.
Yeah, I think we've just got to listen to our community. What do they want in their areas?
Yeah, and if you get one who says, "We've got a plan", don't say you know better when you don't, you know? So that's just my advice as a proud Newtown Residents Association member. Yes, or you can call it the NRA. And it has nothing to do with guns. Ori, Ori Leo?
Yes, yes, thank you. Thirteen?
O for Oscar. If you are elected into council, will you support the Tooranga Commissioner's strategy, direction and long-term plan? Yes or no?
And why?
And why? Yeah, and why? The short answer is, is no, because I want to see first a plan of how we're going to pay for, for all of these wishes. Until we have a strong plan to pay for it, no, I don't think we can afford it. The rates increases and more borrowing, I don't think is the answer for moving forward. So, but once we get on top of our wasteful spending, I think we can, we can achieve all these proposals. So, short answer is no. Thank you.
Now, we're just about to head off to a break, but I'd like to just do a question on there. Would any of you, if elected to council, would approach either Tom Rufford or Sam Afundal to look at lobbying as their local MP to possibly change the revenue collection method for councils? Would you consider that as your role as a councillor to either approach either of the two local MPs? Considering central government dictates what local councilmen can do with revenue collection, and at the moment, it's rates, rates, rates. Would you consider doing that?
Yeah, I, I would consider anything that can, can put a cap on, on waste. So, anything I would consider, yes.
I think we've got to look at local government and say, central government has a place and they need to be upfront about it, and it can't be always local that tries to cover everything. There has to be some accountability from central government to say, you know what, come up with some funds or at least help support us. It can't be just always the ratepayer.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm fortunate enough to have relationships across a range of parties within central government. And through those relationships can easily advocate for our communities, for sure. I would also like to, would also explore, if elected, the need for government agencies to also pay rates on their buildings too, because they don't pay rates.
Except if you're a police station.
Yeah, well then, but there's still 101 other ministries out there that aren't paying rates.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but they're using our roads, they're using our facilities, they've got access to our water, all those sorts of things. So I think it's only fair that they contribute in part to that as well.
Yeah, I agree. I catch up with both Tom and Sam on a regular basis, sometimes Tom weekly. Look, I'd, I'd like to look into it a bit more, but obviously it does make sense. So sure.
Ethan?
Yeah, I would kind of be in, in between. I'd say, yeah, we need to look at how we're spending at a local government level, but also looking at council, central government to foot the bill as well. So two, two-pronged solution.
Well, thank you for that. And it's been a very interesting round of first questions and some very productive dialogue. So we're going to take a quick break now, and we'll see you back in 10 minutes' time for hard-hitting questions.
Thank you.
And welcome back. Now let's get ready for hard-hitting questions. I know, it's not John Hawkesby. Okay, and just for those who have given, given on that little bit just there, we have, I think we've collectively decided Salwood Too Good was the better host of bits in the bag than John Hawkesby.
I'm too young for that, sorry, guys.
Oh, that's all right. I only know about it because of researching for the show.
I love the chase though. Oh, that gets 5.30 on a weekday, that gets me going, bro. Tell ya.
Yeah.
I don't win money, but I love the show.
With hard-hitting questions, these are the questions that... Okay, does that work, Stacey? So, okay, we think we found the optimum volume level that works good for the stream, it doesn't blare on my ear. Okay, so with hard-hitting questions here, these are the questions that all candidates will require to answer. You will not be able to use your button cards or your deferred cards. I think many of you use, don't get buttoned cards, but yes. So you won't be able to get out of that, out of that one. And will be, so that will be how hard-hitting questions go. And it basically issues that are significant to the community in the area or significant questions that have to be asked. So with hard-hitting question number one, do you support the Tooranga City Council's long-term plan 2024 to 2034? And I will just give my random lies list. Ori, Oriu? Am I getting better?
Um, no.
No, I'll be honest on that one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I answered this question already, but yeah, I can say it again. No, I don't support this long-term plan for the reason that I did not see in there a plan of how we're gonna pay and how we're gonna get rid of the debt. Rates increases and, and more borrowing, I don't think it's the, it's a plan. And yeah, that's all I have said on that.
Okay, Cameron?
Yeah, in principle, I do. I believe the LTP is a well-crafted plan for Tooranga's future. There are 46 projects planned, and the plans I'd like to highlight are the CBD projects, the Rosedale Developments in Ohauiwi, and the 15th Ave Tarot Road project. I think we can probably be a bit more efficient with the spending, and I know the new council will look into that to lessen the burden on the ratepayer. There is one thing missing, however, and that is the plan to allow for a development of a supermarket in Welcome Bay. The good thing is, I've already done the hard work and I've made plans with foodstuff, so when I'm elected, I will implement them in the council's annual plan and make amendments to the tenure plan. Thank you.
Wouldn't that be more appropriate in the district plan?
Potentially.
Considering normally zoning is based in the district plan, not in the annual plan. I don't know. Is that better?
Yep.
Slightly. Okay, okay. Was it Hotapu?
Kilda. Cameron must have found my responses online and copied and pasted. No, I'm just, I'm just kidding. Really good answer, bro. And I, I am similar to Cameron, to be fair. I agree mostly with the long-term plan, and I agree that for the most part, they actually consulted well. And I know because I was involved in that, and made sure that communities that aren't heard often, that aren't considered often, that are overlooked, that a long-term plan process doesn't go and consult with, was heard at that table. So by and large, I agree, but the debt is far too much, and it's far too much responsibility for the generation now and the generation to come to bear. So we definitely do need to reconsider some of the big hitters, like the civic centre, like a stadium, which, you know, might be something, for me, I, I agree with the concepts, but not the fact that it solely sits on the ratepayer to front. So we need to look at alternative solutions, put our brains together, perhaps look at overseas investment to make sure that if that is something that we actually want as a community, that we make sure happens, but not at the cost of our own pocket. But yeah, that's my answer to that question. Thank you.
Donna?
How do I go on the back of that? Honestly, I'm happy with the long-term plan, and the reason I'm happy with it, they've spent hundreds and hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars, think about it, it's our ratepayer money, to actually come up with this plan. For us to suddenly truck it out and go, no, you know what, we're going to redesign the whole thing, that is wasteful. We need to pick it over, we need to find those things we can do in budget. We need to make sure that we're fiscally sound as far as our accountability, and we need to make good decisions that will actually have greatest impact. Remembering that that's what we're ideally looking for, is our greatest impact for as least money as we can. You know, we want to make a difference, yes, but not at the cost and the expense of the ratepayer continually. We need to make some really clear decisions, and like I said, let's look at the long-term plan, let's make some changes. It's a plan. It's not set in concrete. We can make some changes.
Okay. Ethan?
Yeah, I'm a bit like my other constituents over here. I'm, I'm against the long-term plan. I believe that if we were to implement a long-term plan, I believe strongly that it must be the decision of the newly-elected council to form a plan that is, will be at the betterment of the people in Tooranga. And I do agree with some of the ideas that council and the commissioners want to bring in, and I would support some of those, especially the 15th Ave Tarot Road bottleneck problem. But I think if we were to make a long-term plan, it should be done by a newly-elected council. Thank you.
Okay, Robert?
Yeah, I, having, I've read most of the long-term plan, it's a hell of a big document, it's nearly 500 pages long. I agree with most of it. A lot of it's just sort of nuts and bolts kind of issues, you know, to do with roading, surge, that sort of thing, just basically giving budgets and that. One thing I do like in particular is one, page 150, council have said that they will adopt a Taoa Maori philosophy, and they will instruct all staff on how to do this. And I've only got a minute, so I can't really go into much more detail about what that means, but it's really just all about respect for the environment, for each other, and yeah. One thing I don't like, this old chestnut, my favourite one, the $980,000 secret event for 2028. Yeah, that doesn't sit well with me. I mean, what's the point in making a plan if you're not allowed to know what it is?
It makes complete sense. Hard-hitting question number two, and I think this one fits so perfectly with the locals here. Tooranga City Council is going into consultation to make 15th Avenue and Tarot's Road Bridge free lanes, with a tidal flow similar to the Auckland Pan Mio Bridge and a clip-on pedestrian and cycle lane next to the existing bridge. Do you support this project? If yes, why? If not, what is your alternative plan for congestion? Ethan?
Well, yes, as I've stated multiple times that, yeah, Tarot Road is one of the biggest issues facing people in Welcome Bay, and it is one thing I'm campaigning so hard for, fixing that bottleneck that frustrates the heck out of everyone of this ward. That's one thing that we really need to get sorted. So I will fully support the tidal flow system as a first temporary solution before looking into future projects where we can properly divide the road and see what is going to better us so that we don't have a bottleneck in future again.
Cameron?
Yeah, I do support it. It's important to be realistic of what we can get here in Welcome Bay. We are one vote of 10 on the council, and competing with the likes of CBD, Papamoa and Taurico is tough to get funding. We're getting 180 million over the 10 years to spend on this, and I think that's awesome. My goal is to reduce traffic congestion by 10%, which is the average traffic falls when students aren't being taken to and from school, and that's a noticeable difference for all of us. For Welcome Bay Ward specifically, it's critical that the 15th Ave Tarot Road project is fast-tracked ASAP. With the Takatimu Northern Link off-ramp exit planned to be built at 15th Ave by Waikatahi, there'll be significantly more added pressure to that road as it connects to State Highway 29A. Better utilisation of existing infrastructure, such as the Hirene Bus Lane, is a must, and also the addition of a supermarket going away from the city, as well as an intermediate slash high school will drastically improve congestion here in Welcome Bay. I've already sorted the supermarket, and I'm working hard with the MP of Tooranga, of Baypliny, Tom Rufford, to build a school here too, all of which will improve congestion here in Welcome Bay. Thank you.
Ori Leo?
Okay, this portion of, of the road, it's something done to it, and I'm glad that they are looking into this. I would like to see the, the details of this proposal, and I would probably advocate maybe even for a four, four-lane road because, you know, a few, few years will pass and then we'll start complaining again about the congestion. But let's see what, what it's possible to, to do, and the short answer, yes, I do support working this road.
Donna?
Absolutely, I support it. It should have been done years ago. All right, let's face it. All right, let's face it, it's long overdue, it should have been done. And it would have cost us a lot less if it had been done a few years ago, right? Um, absolutely, but I think it's only a stopgap. I actually think that it's not gonna be a long term solution because as soon as we do that, Welcome Bay is gonna start growing again. We're going to have a similar problem a little bit further. So I think we need to have some alternatives put in place. I'm not a roading expert, not by any means, but you know what, I can call upon some others who are and come up with some decent options. Not some pioneer sky stuff, just something that actually works and not so far behind that we find we're in the same predicament that we currently in and should have had Tarot's Road done years ago. So I think we've got to get better at what we're planning, plan it better, action it faster and stop costing the rate payer more money than they should have had to pay.
Robert.
Um, no, I don't support it and the reason is this, um, I think if you're gonna do a job properly, well, do it once, do it properly. Because what we need is another bridge. Um, it has been proposed before, um, to do this, but on the, um, inner harbour side and to go, um, around, I think link up with By Mayfair Street behind the, um, service station. But obviously that didn't happen, I think, because a lot of people, or the holiday carps anyway, didn't want to get their beachfront ruined. So I'm not a rating engineer either, but what would make sense to me is to put another bridge on the harbour side and construct like a bi-duct going on the other side of the Pudukauas and to link up at the other end. And the thing is about this is it could be constructed without disrupting the, um, existing traffic flow. But, um, obviously it's gonna be expensive and I think what we need to do is get, um, Waka Kutahe to come to the party. And, um, accept that this is actually a road of national significance as it's a link between State Highway 2 and 29.
Hotapu. Kilda. Uh, I used to pop bombs off the Hiredini Bridge, so I've got, um, quite fond memories of my time. So I'm crossing that bridge after, before and after school, uh, popping bombs after school. Uh, and I always remembered when I used to bike to school, how mum would freak out when I would traverse, um, that stretch of road because of how at times fuck cars, you know, how fast cars were moving and things like that. So in principle, I 100% agree with the idea because it's going to help public transport. We also still need to make public transport sexy, but that's a whole nother issue. Uh, but it's also gonna help people using alternative modes of transport as well by, um, providing a safer means to traverse a real crazy part of our city. Um, but to Cameron's point, and I've been advocating it on my social media and in door knocking conversations too, it needs to become, it needs to come forward. For too long, our ward has been neglected by other, uh, needs and priorities, um, within our city. But it's time that our ward gets a bit of love, um, and provides necessary and gets that turret road sorted uh, to ensure that necessary access is provided for everybody, um, using that road, but also our ward as well. Uh, but we also need to consider alternative things to reduce congestion, like Cam was talking about, I spoke about the school. Um, but also light, like commercial buildings as well, sorry, now I'm taking up the time there. But if we can provide options within our ward to stop people going into city for work, then we're gonna contribute to local economy, reduce congestion and get to know our neighbours that little much better. Kilda.
Now, here's something I do remember. It used to be State Highway 2. Who remembers the Tarot Road Bridge being State Highway 2? Or, or the one that used to always intrigue me was State Highway 2, State Highway 29, from the roundabout right out to, um, Bayfield. That always used to intrigue me as a kid, seeing the red shield and the blue shield. So, you know, is it time to ask Waka Kutahe to take the road back? Oh, oh, no, no, it's the NC whatever the A stands for, um, Transport Agency on that, on that one. But yeah, is it time to ask them to take back what was previously they owned?
No, just front up with the cash. We'll keep the road because we'll design it the way we wanted, but they can front up with some cash.
100% funding?
Yeah, pretty much.
And if you had to choose the state highway number, what number would you like it to be? Uh, you're, you've got, uh, was it the, the, the Bronx of the twenties and the thirties?
I don't think it matters so long as it works, that's all we need.
Okay, let's get to hard hitting question number three. How will you make sure the needs and concerns of young people are, are the priority of your dis, policymaking? Donna, you get to go up first.
This is something really close to my heart because I believe young people have amazing ideas. Because they're not limited by us, who are adults going, oh, you can't do that, you can't do this. So I think they have a place in having a voice. But in saying that, I believe that the council currently has. Uh, and I've attended many workshops where youth have been there and have had a voice about what they would like and how they would like it. There's, uh, the Tauranga Girls College, I know for example, has the global ambassadors where young, uh, girls are very much involved in what's going on around their city. So I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I think what we do need to do, and my mother always said this, you've got one mouth and two ears. And I think it's time that the council started listening properly. Not assuming that they know the answers, not assuming that what someone's going to say, but actually listening and taking on board and actually using it as their foundation. Because I think that's what we're missing.
Robert.
Um, I think in order to, um, do this, what we need first is to know what the youth want and, um, and to get them to actually engage in local body stuff. Now, I've got four sons, eldest is 22, my youngest is 12. And out of the four of them, the only one who actually gives a damn about local politics is my 12 year old. Because, you know, because he likes everything dad does, but that's, that's just him, bless his heart. Um, yeah, I think a youth council is a good idea. Um, that would mean a delegate from all of the local high schools, um, to, you know, come in and have a chat with, uh, other councillors. Maybe once a month, once a fortnight even, just to find out, you know, what their perspective is. Because I mean, yeah, best way to know what the youth want is to talk to them.
Okay, Hotapu.
Kilda, I, uh, first and easy response is to actually ask our youth what they think. It cracks me up because I'm 29, so I still think I'm young, but my, my thoughts are far different to theirs. So first of all, we need to prioritise their voice. Um, I have two little girls, I think I've mentioned it earlier, and they're the reason that I'm standing. And I wanna make sure whether the decisions, um, that our young people can make, big or small, their voice is authentically heard. Uh, one way to do that is through a youth council or youth ward based councils, which I'm a big fan of. We just also need to make sure that those that are elected represent our audience. Because to be fair, the, the youth councils in the past, and I know because I was in several of them, um, were the duckses and the head boys and the head girls of schools. And that's great, but that's, they represent a certain person. And we need to make sure that youth councils like our council, which is why you should vote for me, is diverse. Uh, quick little plug there. But the other one too is deliberative democracy. Deliberative democracy is great. Um, it's a way that we can use examples like citizens assemblies to put a diverse range of people, young and old, from all different backgrounds together. Provide them with all the evidence and resourcing they need to make informed decisions. And their decision has real weight to the overall decision making that council has. So those are two practical examples that I would adopt and pursue as your councillor. Kilda.
Okay, Cameron.
First of all, you can elect me. I am a young person. I haven't really played into my age with my canvassing because I want to be elected on my experience, character, achievements and what I can actually bring to the council. There's no question, I'm young. Second to the supermarket, the most common thing said to me when I'm out door knocking is it would be lovely to have someone young like you on our council. Do they really mean that? I'm not sure. If I'm elected, as many have said at other events and this one, I'm going to start a youth council. But it's not going to be for the lucky few, as Hotapu has just mentioned. It's gonna be a youth council of representatives around every high school and intermediate. We're gonna host pizza lunchtimes and have everyone come to discuss their issues and concerns. And then all come together and talk to the council collectively. I'd also like to attend these meetings at lunchtime too, for the pizza. Thank you.
Uh, uh, there is the check your amount from our producer wants to know who's paying for these pizzas and is it coming out the home economics classroom?
Well, the average, uh, amount a youth council gets in New Zealand is $25,000. I don't think that is a whole lot of money to give to youth councils so they can run festivals, concerts, get togethers or pizza lunches. I think that's fair.
Yeah, I think we, we need to teach our young people, you know, how to, to budget and how to live within their means. Um, needs and the concerns of our young people are the same as, uh, everyone else's. Uh, housing shortages, high rates, uh, I mean, uh, rents and, you know, many other problems that I, I don't need to mention, we all, we all know them. Uh, when we are responsible with the council's spendings and, uh, when we invest in the necessary projects and the infrastructure, it benefits all of us. Uh, today you are young, uh, tomorrow not so young. So we need to invest our money in projects that benefit all of us, all the society. And that would cover everyone. So thank you.
Okay, Ethan.
Well, um, since I'm probably the youngest person here, I just recently turned, uh, 20, um, about a week and a bit ago. So, yeah, I guess the benefit to me is that I may not have the experience of, um, some of my colleagues here. Um, but I know what the young people want. I know when they want it, I can keep in touch with them because I can stay on social media. And I think, yeah, the youth council, brilliant, brilliant idea, and I wish we had that for so long. I know so many of my constituents, my young people, who have wanted a voice because we have a voice. We wanna stand up, we wanna make sure that council is able to deliver for our generation, for our kids' generation. And we wanna be able to future proof ideas. We wanna be able to deliver a city that we can live in, that we're proud of. And that's one thing that I really, really wanna bring. And young people will always, always be the forefront of my ideas whenever they reach out to me. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're heading in the direction of closing questions, but I'd like to add a bit of a fluff question to it. And it's the reason why I call it fluff because it's, uh, more about you rather than what you stand for. Um, as being, uh, the owner of a coffee cart called Bean Here and has proudly put a lot of money into many of its in the ballot shows. I'd like to sit there and ask each candidate, if you were to come to your local favourite cafe or to Bean Here, what would you order? And what type of coffee would you order?
Well, that's easy. Um, if you follow me on my socia's, which I think you should, Hotapu Baker, Welcome Bay Ward. Um, you'll see that my local is the Fat Cat Cafe in Moangutapu. And I will bet you my left eyebrow that they have the best French toast in town. No, but they do, but I won't bet you my left eyebrow, not yet anyway, unless I get elected, no, I'm kidding. But my, um, my local is the Fat Cat Cafe and I love a triple shot Americano because I can't handle milk.
You've got the, you've got the task of dairy allergy, Jane. Is it dairy allergy or you can't handle the taste?
Nah, dairy allergy.
Oh, join the club, join the club.
Nice, and for me, just a flat white.
For me, it's a long shot, Americano, whatever you wanna call it, and just a splash of cream. And I pretty much do those at home. I make sure, that way I know the coffee's great and it's fresh. So, yep, that's me.
Yeah, I'm just gonna add to what Hotapu said, yeah, best French toast in, in the world, yeah, pretty good at the fat cat. Um, a bit similar as well, yeah, I've got a dairy allergy, so I would definitely go for an almond milk mocha, a large one, get me through the day.
Out of an avocado.
Ooh, now that's a good story, all right. My dad's gonna sit and love you for that because, um, when he was up in, um, out of, up in, um, Koutumaka Road, um, it was an avocado orchard that he was loving at. Yeah.
Yeah, just a flat white for me, same as, uh, Cameron, I like to keep it simple.
Yeah.
And quite down my land.
I don't know, but we got so many, you know, serious questions to, to talk about and, uh, what's next, the ice cream flavour? No, I, I don't want to talk about coffee.
Fair enough.
He's a tea drinker, guys.
Okay, so let's get to the next part of, uh, closing statements on why the Welcome Bay voters should give you their first preference votes. Cameron, you get to go off first.
Awesome. Um, as many of you will know, and sorry, I'm gonna talk to the camera for this because I want it for social media. As many of you will know, I've been cam, campaigning very hard since the start of this year. I've spoken to thousands of residents, knocked on thousands of doors, taken countless meetings, all to prove to you I'm not just some kid that got lucky in business. I've put in the work, I see it through and achieve what I set out to do. A vote for me is a vote for Welcome Bay Ward. I'm tired of sitting in traffic, travelling in and out of the city. I'm tired of not having sufficient amenities in our community. I'm tired of being known as the forgotten suburb of Tauranga. It is time for change. You need someone who is going to deliver for you. You need someone with actionable plans and a track record of completing them. You need someone who's going to push Welcome Bay Ward and Tauranga forward. I'm your man. When the voting ballots come out, look for my name and give me your one. If you're still not yet convinced, let's catch up in person or visit my website, CameronTemplar.com. And remember, actions over words, vote one for Templar. Thank you.
Ori Leo.
Yep. Increased rates and, uh, and more, uh, more borrowing, I don't think is the, is the way forward for, for our city. Uh, so I think it's, uh, it's time to get, uh, our spending under control. Um, now it's, uh, time for everyone to make a decision whether we, we bring to our council someone who has a business minded, uh, approach. Or we're gonna bring back the same kind of people that they're very good at talking, very good at writing long reports, but not so good at, uh, spending, uh, our money in the right place. So it's up to all of us to choose the right person. So thank you and good luck to all of us.
Robert. Um, I'm, I'm gonna stay seated and use age as an excuse. Um, yeah, I'd, first of all, I'd like to, um, thank Sam and all the crew for, um, putting up with us and hosting this sort of thing. I know it takes a lot of your time and a lot of money as well. And, yep, and so, uh, anyone out there, feel free to donate, I'm sure they'll give you a link.
There's Neff post machine here.
And that too. Um, and the audience, thank you for turning up on this cold night. Um, it's good to see a few people out who have an interest in this and I'm thinking there'll be a few more online as well watching too. Um, the role of councillor is, um, twofold. I mean, there's, um, the equally important parts, the first is, um, you have to be able to digest a lot of information in order to, um, you know, go to a meeting, armed with the facts and be able to make good decisions that are in the interests of both your electorate and the community. And anyone who knows me in person will know that I have this freakish ability to speed read really quickly and gather meaning from it. So I think I'll be pretty useful in that regard. The second, and this is probably, well, actually even more important, is to be a community liaison. Like you have to, um, the information you've absorbed, you have to be able to, um, spread it out amongst your, um, constituents and get them to assist you in your choices. Um, but they, that information needs to be given them before the fact, unlike what's been happening for the past four years where stuff just happens and you either like it or you don't. So, yeah, that's me, um, I'm on Facebook, look up Robert Ko for Welcome Bay Ward and as always, Ko for council. Take it there.
Okay, Donna.
Hi, my name's Donna Hannah. And while I've done a lot of work, I've also actually at the same time studied really hard. So I have worked full time, studied full time. I have three bachelor's degree, a bachelor in business management, a bachelor in information systems and a bachelor in psychology. My latest degree, I finished four years ago. I'm now studying Tareo online. I always study, I always look to see what else I can do. I'm an activist in my community. I have volunteered for St John, I volunteered for six years as a emergency medical technician and qualified, supporting those people that were unwell. I am now on the area committee at St John in Kati Kati and I'm looking to start the youth brigade back up over there. I actually am advocating for Catch Caddy, if any of you know about that. Uh, they promote the festival cultures out there. We are running Matariki out there. I am very strong in the community, I believe in community. I believe that the community needs to have a voice. And it's only when I go to the community and ask, what do you need? What do you want? Do I get the right answers? I'd like to be that person that can actually voice your thoughts, your ideas and what you want. Because at the end of the day, you need a voice. And if you don't have a voice, you don't have any choice. Someone else is going to make it for you. I believe I can work well with others. I believe I can be an advocate for you. And vote for me and I'll make sure that you have a voice at that table. And you know what? I work well with others. So there might be 10 others there, but I'm pretty sure I convince a few of them to be alongside me. So vote for me, vote for Donna. I stand for the rate payers. I stand for accountability to make sure your spend is valued. And I stand for vital, effective viability. In other words, it has to be worth it. We shouldn't be investing in stuff that has no value to us long term. Thank you.
Can my minute be that long? Just asking.
Well, yeah, I noticed the timer wasn't put on so people can put their closing statements on social medias. So otherwise you won't see the clock. Yeah, there wasn't a clock put in the background, so that would happen, you know. I mean, Cameron mentioned about going on social media, so none of the timers were put on so that the social media will have a nice clean feed that you won't see it counting down. Yeah, Hotapu.
Kilda, well, I think I look good on both sides, so I'm going to address the audience in the room. Leadership is two things, service and relationship-centric. And those are two qualities that underpin my approach to leadership. And tonight is an example of that because I know some of you in the room agreed with my idea of reducing the voting age to 16. But I can sit down with you, have a civil conversation because of the relationship we've built and come to a common understanding. We're not going to agree on everything and that's okay. But we can come to a common understanding and you can be rest assured that I will advocate fiercely for you, me and our wider community. I believe that I'm actually best placed to represent our ward, not only because of the skills and experience and expertise I have and the proven track record I have in getting things done, but also because the priorities that I have in my ward that you'll see in the leaflets, that you'll see online at Hotapubaker.com or on Facebook at Hotapu Baker, Welcome Bay Ward, that my priorities are your priorities. And I know that I'll make sure that those things come to fruition when I'm elected your councillor. Tauranga City has not seen a community-centric, future-focused collaborative leadership in a very long time, but he is here. My main purposes are a healthy environment, thriving communities. Welcome Bay Ward, vote one for Hotapu Baker.
Okay, Ethan.
Well, I'd just like to start saying thank you all for coming. It's been an awesome night. And also to you online, thank you for joining. Yeah, a vote for me would definitely be a vote for a young voice. I don't know if this council's ever had someone under the age of 21 elected, but I'm more open to hearing if there has. I guess me being on council would mean the ability to bring in ideas, plans, perspectives, initiatives that would future-proof Tauranga City. So that when you guys eventually go over the Rainbow Bridge, you don't have to worry about the welfare of your city, that you know that you've built a city, you've put in people that are able to deliver, people that are able to bring in ideas that have made this city a good place for your children, for their children and for future people to come. I'm also on social media. You can find my Facebook on all the notice boards. You can find my Instagram and my TikTok as well. So yeah, a vote for Ethan would be a vote for a young voice. If you have any other reasons, vote Ethan for a reason. Thank you.
And just like I like to do at every single show, with STV, it's very important you make sure you put number one on the ballot paper. That's the first thing you want to do. But these elections are going to come down to second and third and fourth precedent votes that are going to end up making who is the most successful candidate get across the line. So whoever is that person on the final iteration of the votes will have at least 50% of the vote plus one. So when you're going through there, feel free to use this as a tool to work out how you'd like to rank your paper, who you'd like to put as number one. And if you can't do it, who would you have second, your third, your fourth? You know, because those preference votes are going to be very important in a single member ward. And that is one of my big things about with voting here. I mean, I've been using, I only had to use STV before I knew there was more than one role on a council. If that's telling you something, which was back in 2010 was when I did my first local body election and learnt a hell of a lot more about the councils than what there are now, well, look what I'm doing now. So that is something to sit there and look at is, you know, utilise the STV, use it as a tool to get the, you know, to rank your preferences on how you want to do it. And can I also say thank you to the candidates for putting the feet to the fire and thank you for making to be another 100% turnout. You can put a lot of incumbent Wellington City councillors to shame. And I'm happy for them to be called out, particularly if they live in the Pukihina Lampton Ward. So you know, it's quite good there. So yes, my fellow councillors down there, I hope you're watching. Considering, I think, I think at least one of them's friends of me on Facebook and I'm live streaming on my personal Facebook account at the same time. So yeah, so you can sit there and do it. And yeah, it's not easy getting out there. It's a bit brave jumping in front of a camera to sit there and do things. I know that's not the easiest task for everyone, but you performed brilliantly. Good luck with the election. I'm not sure what I gave her. Donna, you probably want to start off saying something and I think a few more mics might pop up soon.
I just think, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be able to have a voice and be able to share it with our community in a safe and good environment where we don't feel like somebody's going to chuck something at us because we say something wrong. So thank you all for coming out, but thank you for providing the vehicle that we could use. It's brilliant. Thank you.
Okay, so for those who are wondering, I think we're going to have a full night audience-wise tomorrow, but we've got the Matoa Otamota Ward Show at, was it? Get there at 6:30 PM if you want to be an audience member or streaming live from 7 PM at the Tauranga Bridge Club. So that's probably, and yeah, we've got the Merrill Debate. Yes, you think, Donna. This is what happens when you've got a Merrill candidate staying next to you. Yeah, we've got also a reminder that we have the Merrill Debate at 7 PM on Friday and we're going to see how we kind of manage 15 candidates. It's going to be very interesting and it's going to be very production line focused, but not going to be as relaxed as this show is, but we'll make it work.
They already know. Vote for me as Mayor. Thank you.
Yep, so we'll go and see you all back here at 7 PM tomorrow night. Goodnight.
I'll quickly say, I'll quickly say, just thinking about it now, we are probably the youngest average candidates ever to run for the Tauranga City Council. There's a few that bring it down, but I think that's pretty cool.
Compared to Tareko Ward, yes. Yeah, yeah, considering, I could say all four of them were old enough to be my father.